On February 6th, and I'll now call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. The meeting is being aired live and recorded for future broadcasts. I'd ask everyone to please join me in a salute to our flag.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council has not been made aware of the passing of any military veterans, but I would ask that everyone please join us for a moment of silence to honor all of those veterans who have passed. Thank you. Our agenda starts with item A, the approval of minutes from the prior meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting from Jim.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Counselor McKinnon is absent.
Abstained.
So we could do a voice vote on these. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Item B, announcements from the president. We have no announcements this evening. Item C, proclamations. We have no proclamations this evening. Item D, citizen open forum. At this time, I would entertain, I would allow, entertain anyone from the public who would like to come up and make a up to three minute comment. If you would like to approach, just state your name and address, please. And I would ask that you do try to keep it to three minutes. I'll, I'll kind of jump in at the three minute mark. I have it right here. Thank you.
Good evening, Janet Hansen, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. How are you doing? Haven't been here for a while. I would like to comment on the proposed zoning amendment ordinance D F Y 24 dash 004. I attended the Zoom planning board meeting that they had about this, and they recommended maximum height of four stories. I noticed the C E D C did not recommend that. They wanted to accept the six. 16,000 square feet maximum footprint for the planning board instead of 25,000. C E D C chose to not accept that. I feel strongly that six stories is way too tall. I think we should go with what the planning board recommended. I'm hoping the town council takes what the planning board recommended, more so than what C E D C recommended. There's no need of having six stories. It's not going to help any retail businesses. We don't need that much retail residential area units in that area. Perkins property is going to be mixed use. So you're going to have the retail and the residence on that side. We need to keep campus plaza just retail. I think that's the most important. I think residents are more looking at retail as a need for this town and not residential units. But it seems like everything's concentrating on residential units, and I know a lot has to do with the state M B T A regulations. But I think when you move it, if you are going to move it, you're going to meet that requirement. And there's also been talk about the B S U employees not having adequate housing. I don't think the town should be basing any decisions on whether or not B S U employees have adequate housing. You know, that shouldn't be a basis on our decisions. But I think six stories is way too big. And it's not going to match the surrounding towns. They're not six stories. I don't feel, I mean, as far as the T R C, the technical review committee, I noticed everything that's in the T R C. But historical committee wasn't part of it or commission. I don't know what it's called, committee or commission. But I feel that they should be part of that T R C because especially if you're dealing with downtown. I don't understand why they're not part of that T R C. And I don't know how other committees like conservation commission fits into that. What will be the checks and balances for this new ordinance? Does the public have any say on any of the decisions of the developable proposals? Who has the final say? Is it the T R C or the town council? What controls do we have as to what businesses are allowed to go in that spot? And then in section 98.51, 98.5.1 waivers. It says that it's the discretion of the director of the C E D to approve or deny a waiver. Shouldn't this be up to the T R C as a whole? The way it's worded, it sounds like it's only one.
10 seconds. Sorry.
It's words that it's only one person. So I wanted to know, you know, about that. And the height of the roof access, they said roof access shouldn't matter on the stories. And I'm just wondering what limits are there on the two, the access. You make it so I can't.
I know, I'm sorry. We do have a second.
One second. So I just want to know what's, what balances do you have for the roof access? Is there limits for that? So in conclusion, please limit the heights and the, we don't need mixed use in campus platter and add the historical commission to the T R C. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
Okay. There you go. Yeah. Welcome.
Hello, I'm William Smith. I'm the chair of the Bridgewater Historic District Commission in Bridgewater. Last week, I sent a letter to President Moore regarding the historic district commission's role vis a vis the new Massachusetts communities legislation and zoning changes, which you're going to be considering this evening. There was a reference to the H D C in your draft zoning proposal, but I just really wanted to reaffirm our role. I contacted the Massachusetts Historical Commission and spoke with the director of all the historic districts for the Commonwealth. And she assured me that historic district bylaws and Mass General Law 40 C trump any zoning changes based on the legislation that's being considered this evening. I was concerned earlier that the role of the historic district commission might be marginalized or curtailed or diminished if these new policies were implemented. But I was assured by the Mass Historical Commission that that would not be the case, that we would continue regulating and overseeing the historic district in Bridgewater as the commission has done for the last 40 years by following our established review and approval processes. The H D C just wants to go on the record to reaffirm our role. The Department of State also informed me that a lot of local historic districts in eastern Massachusetts that will be affected by these new zoning laws have similar questions and regarding their responsibilities and their authority relative to these zoning changes. We're just interested in maintaining the architectural and the historical integrity of our important town center. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
Good evening. My name is David Moore, chairman of the Historical Commission. I have two questions. The Historical Commission, I presented a letter to the council last May seeking a change in our admin code and still waiting to hear. Six, seven months later. Mr. Dutton responded to me about a month ago that town council was, the town attorney was still looking it over to make sure there are no conflicts. Well, I've been waiting seven months and we just want to keep it moving forward. The other question, I have a gentleman that has approached the hometown heroes program. There are a number of banners of residents of the Stanley area. And he would like to see a dedication of the new bridge down there, something in that way of dedicating to the Italian American community who were involved in the, in war effort. Men and women. So I just ask one question. Who should he address that request to seeing as we have no veterans agent right now?
I will make sure that we follow up and get an answer for you on both questions.
Thank you.
Would anyone else from the public care to speak?
Hi, Mary Lee Kenny Hunt, Austin Street. Just very briefly, I've been hearing a lot of talk this week through my office and other places. I just want to say I hope you'll vote against the six stories and keep it to four. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is not the long and the short of it. Think about it. Carlton Hunt, Austin Street. One thing I'm glad to see that the energy aggregation program has been moved forward and you will be voting on it tonight. I think that's a really great thing as the Energy Committee. I've encouraged that in the past. As to the form based code, I generally appreciate it. I like it, but it has some warts that I'd like to address. First of all, I did a detailed review of the checklist, the 13 page checklist. It's very comprehensive, but it's not customized to Bridgewater. It also has some warts in it. For example, it refers to some kind of county oversight, which is wrong. And the last piece I will say, it doesn't have the word complies with or comports with the form based code. Without that words, putting all the dimensional requirements complies with the size, the height, whatever dimensions you can speak of, without that being in there, you don't have somebody down the road five years from now who would understand it has to comply with. Because the way it reads right now, it just simply, you check off the box if you receive the plan. And I don't think that's the right thing to do for this form based code. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to speak? Okay. I think at this point then we will conclude citizens open forum. Move on to agenda item E, appointments. We have no appointments this evening. Moving on to agenda item F hearings, we have no hearings this evening. Agenda item G license transactions. We have no license transactions this evening. Presentations H, we have no presentations this evening. I, town managers report.
Mr. Brennan, if I, if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we take item L out of order.
Item L is legislation for action. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. We will hold off on agenda item I and move ahead to agenda item L, which is legislation for action. The first item is item A, proposed zoning amendment ordinance D F Y 24 004, central business district and form based code. I would defer to the town manager for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, I think the council knows that the form based code has been a focus of our community and economic development efforts over the last year, and it's, it is coming very close to fruition. I will say that based on the planning board's recommendations and their recommended edits and the community and economic development committee's recommended edits and some of the comments we heard here tonight, as well as some staff, staff recommendations, I would like to propose that we come back to you with a clean version of, of the proposed ordinance showing obviously all the changes, but showing you exactly where those changes are and then giving you a clean version of that that we can then readvertise and bring back to you for a vote. I do think unfortunately, there were a lot of different versions, so to speak, floating around. And I want to make sure that everyone's clear. Certainly the counselors are clear, but I want to make sure that the public is clear about exactly what the form based code is and what's in it and, and why it should be beneficial. So that's just, I don't, just sort of taking some of Mr. Ruly's time, but I just thought that that is a better process for us to make sure we get it right and get it in front of you in proper format, in more importantly, understandable format than, than otherwise. So if, with your indulgence, I would ask you to simply, you don't even have to continue it. We'll just, we'll put it on the agenda again for next meeting and then ask you to review the clean version and then readvertise for the March 12th meeting. So if, if.
Can I ask maybe just make a motion to defer to, what, what meeting did you say?
For, it would be, I would.
February 20th?
Like the council to review the clean edits on the 20th. Right, the 20th, two weeks from today, then refer to advertising and then have a vote, possibly a vote on the 20.
March 12th.
12th, sorry.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just wanted to know if we were under any.
Yeah, so I think we have maybe just a few questions on that.
Are we under any time, time restrictions for this? Is there?
Well, we have to be in compliance by December 31st, 2024 to meet the M B T A communities legislation. Having said that, we are starting to see activity from the development community. We're starting to see activity with respect to certain parcels in town. When Mr. Dunn is done, I do want to review some of the, a lot of red ink was used in this exercise. Want to review some of the amendments that have been done since Friday when you got your packets based on meetings with the planning board chair and the C E D chair. And then also address some of the comments that were put forth by the public tonight.
Sure.
If you would indulge me.
Yeah, I think March, I mean, I'm just saying March 12th, if that's the night that we take a final vote, is that going to jeopardize? Is that day going to jeopardize any potential investments that we have ongoing?
It'll probably cause people anxiety for the next three weeks, but legally it's not going to.
Okay.
And maybe if I could just clarify the, the process. So a version of this has been socialized. There were suggestions on edits. So the next version we get back. Will we then be making motions to amend to include those edits? Or are we going to get an edited version back? I just want to make sure I understand the logistics.
You will get, you will get a red line version and a clean version. The clean version for your benefit allows you to read through the whole thing. You will basically vote to edit, sorry, vote to amend the document at your February 20th meeting and replace it with the version that you're presented at that meeting.
Right.
Obviously, at that meeting, the counselors can make any edits. If there are any additional edits, the counselors can make those. And then once you're done through that edit process, it goes to advertising and then March.
12th.
March 12th, sorry. March 12th would, it would come back to you.
Great. Thank you. So just to say back what you just said, in our next meeting on the 20th, we'll get a version that includes all of the feedback and accounts for other, the other committees that have contributed to it. We would then take a, a vote to accept that new version. That would go to advertising and then get voted on after that cycle.
And that would include any additional comments from tonight from either the public or from you?
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Okay, we can move to voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do, Mr. Ruly does have some, a slide deck and some explanation about, about what we've gone through so far. If you'll indulge that, that'd be helpful.
Do we do that now or as part of the town manager's update?
Nope.
Either way, it's fine. We can do it now.
Yep, absolutely. Absolutely. It's part of the agenda.
So I think the first issue I'd like to address, and I appreciate those that don't think six stories is appropriate or campus plaza should always be retail. Fundamentally, that's not how redevelopment happens. Retail and restaurants get supported by having residential to support it. We've called out the opportunity to have six stories in locations that are over 160,000 square feet. Presently in the C B D R, which is the only area where we're looking at significant redevelopment. There are only two potential sites where that could occur. That would be on campus plaza and potentially in the portion of the Spring Street lot in the future. In addition to 160,000 square feet requirement, there is a requirement that those buildings be fronted by other buildings along the street edge. So you're not having a, a six story building just sitting out there by itself. Another reason to include the opportunity for six stories was that would be considered a density bonus. The density bonus would require that a percentage of those additional units be mixed income, de-restricted mixed income. We think that's important. We have language within the form based code for other density bonuses that require either a percentage of mixed income housing or a contribution to public improvements. So, I mean, we don't see the six stories at campus plaza or the Spring Street lot necessarily be out of scale. There's some economic realities as to why developers would want to do that. We do have a housing crisis in the state. We have a housing crisis in Bridgewater. We are trying to meet the requirements of the M B T A communities legislation. So understand there was some reticence from the planning board to agree to the six stories. Pleased that the C E D committee saw the value of having the six stories. So that's, again, that's the rationale behind that. We're not looking at six stories on Broad Street. You know, it's very limited to where that can go. With respect to the checklist, appreciate Mr. Hunt pointing out there's a Scribner's error in terms of, and we will clean that up. We discussed this this afternoon. We will include an additional checklist item in there that makes sure that the historic district requirements are being met. I also want to say that we've been very specific in the drafting of this document that we have the C B D S, which is essential square, our historic downtown. Any projects approved in that area still need to go through the planning board, the site plan review and special permit process. The C B D R is to really promote development of those sites that we've identified to be underutilized. We've shared that on a map before. We want to make sure that we can take advantage of the economic opportunities that exist now and have an expedited approval process. Again, I will look to the Perkins project, which has been three years in the making. That end result of that project right now is exactly what the form based code would do. We got a redesign of that project to be consistent with the design guidelines we have in the form based code. We have a commitment for 10% of the units to be affordable and we have a financial unrestricted commitment of $200,000 for public improvement. We're not going to be able to get the level of funding from every project, but that's an indication on some of these larger sites of what we can do. So with that being said, we know we need to go through and clear up the numbers. There are some Scribner errors in that document. I think, and I'm happy to share, if you go to the next slide, some of the changes that were made based on conversations with the C E D committee and the chair of the planning board. And I just want to go on record now to say that there's been a lot of cooperation from both the public and boards and commissions to get us to this point. Super appreciative of that because there's been a lot of positive feedback. So to council member Robinson and planning director, I mean, planning board chair Driscoll, that's what has helped us to get to this point tonight, which, you know, I will share one last thing before I get into this. Some communities have taken three years to get here. We've gotten here in a lot less time, I think with a much better document than other communities have. So this, this is just a change from what you saw in, what you got in your package at the end of last week. The table dimensions did not include the redevelopment, the C B D R. So we're making sure that that's in there. If you go to the next slide, Michael. Also, there was language missing with respect to adding site plan in as well as special permit. And this is related to the C B D S S. So that is the central square area. Just making sure that site plan is still part of the requirements as well as special permit. Next. This is something that we had missed was making sure that the density bonus, we had it in the C B D S. We really needed it in the C B D R because that's where we have the ability for more development. So again, allowing for the density bonus. I know there's been some question and conversation over the last several days on whether a technical review committee is even allowed. We are going to include the checklist as part of the ordinance. So what you are approving is a zoning amendment that basically no different than the building officials signing off on something that staff would be able to sign off on projects that come in the C B D R if the checklist is satisfied. That document and all the documents that support it will be available to the public. We're proposing that once staff has made that recommendation, that there be a 20 day appeal period available. Should there be questions from the community with respect to what is being approved? So we want to be as transparent as we can through this process. But again, I think, you know, the biggest benefit coming out of this form based code is A, we're getting the type of buildings that we want to see. We're doing them for the most part at a scale that's appropriate, but we're also doing it through an expedited approval process. Do I have another one? And this is the last one. There was some language confusion that we were eliminating site plan review throughout the town. That was not what our intention was. So this language is just to clear that up. So these will all be included in the clean version in addition to what you've seen previously. And then what other additional comments or edits come from you all tonight, if any.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Yep. Paul?
I just have one question regarding the technical review committee. So how will we address that in comparison to our town charter, which specifies that the committee will have to be citizens?
We're eliminating any terminology that says technical review committee, changing that language that because the checklist is made, being made part of the ordinance, it will be an administrative staff review of that checklist. That can be a public meeting for people when we do the review. And again, adding in the opportunity for there to be an appeal from any final conclusions that the site plan review group makes.
I just have another, well, sorry, I don't know, this maybe threw you to the town manager or to the town attorney, but does, does that February 20th ordinance need to go back to the planning board to be voted on as was this one? Or would we skip that step now?
No, it'll come back, sorry, come back to you as an amendment. And then, and then it comes back to you for public hearing. The prior version went to C E D and the planning board for public hearing. This, this will come back for public hearing in front of the council on, on March 12th.
So there would be no vote from the, the planning board on this version?
They've already voted, so there wouldn't be an additional vote on this. Right. Correct.
Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions. Once the form based code is adopted by the council, are you comfortable that, does this go to the state? Do they sign off and say, you have complied or you haven't complied? What is the process once we approve? Are you comfortable with the way this has been drafted that we're meeting what they're asking towns like Bridgewater to do?
Yes, so, and thank you for that question. So our process leading up to this was we had received a grant through Mass Housing Partnership to bring an outside consultant to develop a compliance plan. And that was Horsley Witten Group that we used. We then subsequently received funding through the governor's office through a one stop grant to draft the zoning amendment. The form based code is just one element of that zoning amendment. So we're comfortable that the zoning amendment is meeting the requirements of the M B T A communities compliance. The zoning amendment, which includes the form based code, does need to go to the executive office of housing and livable communities for approval. But we are comfortable that we are well within the compliance requirements.
The thought process is why, why are the zoning amendments being combined with the form based code? Why didn't we take that up separately? Why didn't we, I mean, because I always asked you this question is, you know, the form based code is just a tool in the toolbox. Developers that come in can use that or not use that. But the zoning ordinances that are being changed, particularly, and I read through it, through it, you know, talking about unloading and unloading stock or whatever, you have to park certain, you know, there'll be signs where to park. I mean, why, why are they together?
The form based code cannot survive on its own outside of the zoning.
Sure.
Because it's just, the form based code. Because it's just, the Form Based Code is establishing dimensional requirements, as an example. That's a zoning issue. It's establishing some uses. That's a zoning requirement. So, you embed the Form Based Code within the zoning amendment because it can't live by itself of outside of it.
And it's not going to be a requirement if Campus Plaza is redeveloped. They're not required to have six stories.
That's correct.
It's an option. It would be an option for them.
That's correct. A developer, a property owner could say, I don't want to, I'm not interested in your Form Based Code or your zoning amendment. They then would go through the normal Site Plan and Special Permit Process with the Planning Board.
And as far as businesses or, you know, companies, I mean, are they restricted to a first floor? Could a business go on a second or third floor if they wish to under these guidelines?
They could. The only restriction we have in terms of floors is that you want to see commercial uses on the ground floor, no residential on the ground floor. But certainly, if somebody built space and said, you know, I want to do the first three floors as office or retail, they would have the opportunity to do that.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Maybe if I could just ask one. So, I think there are these two big drivers for this. One is, we want to make sure that we're compliant. But the second is, we want to revitalize the downtown. I mean, that's a, that's a big driver. And you mentioned it. I just want to make sure I understand the statement. So, if you look at towns that have successfully revitalized the downtown area, almost unanimously or universally, they create a lot of foot traffic. And then that foot traffic goes in and out of the stores, which makes it a profitable location for a store to be. And then as soon as you have profitable store locations, the stores around it start to paint their fronts because now they can get more because they're in a profitable location. So, the foot traffic leads to the business traffic, leads to the building transformation. That's like the recipe, right? And so, I guess my question is, in the Form Based Code, do we feel like it is positioned to be the spark that starts that process? Does it have enough? Do we think we'll get enough residents or housing units to get the foot traffic? Do we think we'll have enough commercial space to create the shopping pattern?
I, based on the level of interest we're seeing in advance of this, I would say unequivocally yes. The, I mean, and part of it is just driven by what the economics of getting these deals finance. Now, in this economic environment, housing is what's going to drive the financing for these projects because, you know, you don't have a big box retailer. You don't have a Macy's or Nordstrom's being a tenant. So, any of the commercial space is basically not bankable in terms of financing. It's the housing that is going to drive that. But also, and, you know, we've talked about it, this is an opportunity for us to create true mixed income housing. We're seeing this already with the Perkins. Respectively disagree with Ms. Hanson in terms of whether we should care about the university having housing. University is one of the largest employers we have in Bridgewater. So, certainly, I would think any employer, we would want to be listening to what their needs are in terms of what they need to be successful. I've talked at great length about the cybersecurity program at the university, which is having a ribbon cutting at the end of this week. We see that to be a huge economic development driver for this region, not just for Bridgewater, but for the region. So, we lack a certain housing product in Bridgewater right now. But certainly, you know, I hear a lot, you know, if we only had this good restaurant, if we only had this. We already are hearing from restaurant owners, business owners, that are hearing rumors of things happening near them that they're excited and maybe I should do something with my building. So, I mean, it's kind of the field of dreams. I don't want to sensationalize it, but, I mean, it does work.
Yeah. And the flip side is, if we don't do it, we lose control of the system, right? You have a, you have a developer with their own idea, another one with their own idea, and it's not.
Well, I mean, I think two points is that, you know, we can use, look at Milton as an example that as a select board, took them three years to approve their MBTA Communities Legislation. And now there is a referendum for a town meeting to reverse that. Both the Attorney General and the Secretary of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities has sent them a letter and highlighted the 14 funding sources that they no longer will be able to access. So, that's significant. But also, I think, you know, Mr. Dutton has pointed out that we, in the past, I think there was an idea that if somebody came with a 40B, we just had to accept it. Whatever they threw at us, we had to accept it. And that necessarily, that wasn't necessarily correct. I mean, so, I don't see a lot of opportunities right now for 40Bs because developers would want to come in and do something market rate. But we have control over 40Bs. I mean, we didn't act like we did, but we do, and we should have. So...
You know, it's great. So, this is, this is us taking control of the plan as a community and us putting those ideas and constraints down and writing so that anyone who comes and builds here aligns with what we want to do, with the plan. Great. Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? All right. In the course of that, I just placed my agenda. There we go. All right. At this point, we will close Legislation for Action Item A. We did vote to take the entire section. Oh, sorry. Did you have a question?
Did we vote? There was no vote?
We voted to postpone.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we had a presentation. But thank you, because normally I forget that. So, I appreciate it. We're going to move on to Item LB, Order OFY 23059, Laying Out and Accepting of a Private. Did we not vote?
I don't think we officially voted on it, no. I think Mr. Dutton made this.
We did. We did.
Nine to nothing to 2:20.
Normally, I would believe you.
I vote yes regardless.
It felt so long ago.
So, just, just, just to make sure we're clear, we voted to essentially move the whole thing to our next meeting, where we'll review the edited version. Thanks. Order OFY 23059, Laying Out and Accepting a Private Way Trinity Circle. I would defer to the Town Manager for an overview.
Mr. President, you, the Council collectively voted to accept the laying out and accept the private way as a public way, also known as Trinity Circle. That, that vote unfortunately had conditions attached to it. So, in terms of recording that, that vote at the Registry of Deeds, our Town Attorney said better to go record something that does not have conditions attached to it. So, we are bringing this back to you. All the conditions that you had referenced in that original vote to accept have been met. So, what we are asking you to do again is vote now to cleanly accept Trinity Circle as a public way.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for the Town Manager? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? To move to a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Item C, Order OFY 24022, Acceptance of Gift. Defer to the Town Manager for an overview.
Mr. President, the, the owners of the, what I refer to as the two lots on Broad Street, who had agreed to sell through a friendly eminent domain to the town of Bridgewater, sold it for less than the appraised value. And this is simply an acceptance of equity, an equity gift to the tune of $40,000.
Thank you. Any questions for the Town Manager? All right. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, a second.
Mr. President, just for the record, the Finance Committee voted 3 to 0.
Yeah. Apologies. Thank you.
3 to 0 tonight.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any additional discussion? All right. We can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Item D, Order OFY 24023, Acceptance of Donation. Oleari Charitable Foundation, defer to the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Oleari Foundation generously forwarded a gift to us to the tune of $20,000 to be split evenly between the Fire Department and the Police Department for their needs as determined by the respective chiefs. And so, I would encourage the Council to accept this donation.
Thank you. Any questions?
It voted 3 to 0 tonight.
Okay. Agreed. The Budget and Finance Meeting this evening voted 3 to 0, 3 to 0 in favor. Finance voted 6 to 0 in favor. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? We have none. We can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Item E, Order OFY 24024, Vote to Authorize the Town Council President and Town Council Vice President to Sign on Behalf of the Town of Bridgewater. 14 days have passed, therefore, it may be finally considered this evening. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Okay. Again, we took Item L out of order. So, now I'll return to Item I, Town Manager's Report. The first item we have is Item A, Veterans Agent Update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think there was a little bit of confusion and perhaps some misunderstanding at the last meeting. I just wanted to clarify a few things and let you know what we're doing to get coverage for Veteran Services. I had mentioned that we are proposing to form a district with the Town of Rainham. That district is formed by the Board of Selectmen and in Rainham and me as Town Manager in Bridgewater. That district, assuming that we get it completed, will require certain staffing levels for Veteran Services Officer and Support Staff. The, the reason we are doing this, and I probably wasn't very clear at the time. As you know, our Veterans Agent is retiring or has retired. He is, was part-time. He was a 19-hour employee. The only reason he could have, he could stay as a 19-hour employee, which is contrary to the law, current law, is that he predates the law. His, his position as Vet's Agent predates the law. Absent, moving towards a Veterans District would require us to expend probably quadruple what we currently spend on Veteran Services. We are trying to create something that is an entity or a service that better serves veterans. And I want to be clear about that. I think our ability to serve veterans is better met by joining a district which is, which is governed by state law, more specifically than an independent town Veteran Service Agent. So, we are offering better support, more staffing and better service to our, to our veterans. We know there are a huge, probably, well, very likely a huge population of veterans that we're not reaching. So, this is all really in an effort. Obviously, we have to replace the agent. This is all in an effort for us to be able to provide a better service to veterans than we could otherwise provide. The district, I think there's some confusion about a district. A district is not a two-town agreement, even though technically it is. A district is a district. So, if you're a veteran that lives, lives within the district, you get services. It's not a question of how many hours the agent is here, how many hours is here, how many hours they're dedicating to each town. The, the important point is that you create a district. It's operated as a district. And to some extent, it's even different than our regional school district. Our regional school district, as you know, Rainham educates their K-8, Bridgewater pre-K-8. We educate our pre-K-8, and then they go to a regional high school. So, with a Veterans District, anywhere within the bounds of the two towns, you will get service. So, I want to be very clear about that because I, the notion that, you know, each town gets X number of hours is, is an unfortunate characterization. So, if there are veterans that need services anywhere within that district, you get services within that district. I will say, we went out for advertising. We advertise in-house. We've done this in conjunction with Rainham. We currently have three candidates who are only there, three very good candidates. I obviously can't tell you who they are, but we have three really good candidates who are only there because we are creating a district. And I think that's chronically been the problem in some of the towns around us in trying to hold on to really good Veterans Agents is that they find better opportunities in larger towns, mostly north of here. So, so I think there was a little confusion about that, but I just wanted to be very clear about the conversations that we're having with Rainham. And the point of creating a district is to provide better services so that, that, you know, we can better serve veterans. So...
Thank you. I think Counselor Gallagher has a question and then...
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael, I know we talked, you know, outside this meeting. And I am still a little skeptical of having a district. I do think that our veterans have been undeserved the past several years. And I hope that whatever plan is put in place, and to clarify too, is you have that authority to create a district. We cannot, we do, we don't vote on that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, you have that authority. Like I said, I'm a little skeptical of it, but let's give it a shot. I won't be on the Council when this takes place. But I just hope that there's more outreach. That's what I'd like to see. Whoever the person is, whatever the staffing looks like, there needs to be more outreach. Because when you told me the statistics earlier, you know, it surprises me that there are more in Rainham than Bridgewater. And I think that's totally due to no, a lack of outreach. That's all I ask, is that whatever plan is in place is more. We could say it here, but who's listening, Mike? Five, 10 people maybe?
Mm-hmm. That, when the rubber hits the road, we'll know. So, if Deb would allow me to share screen again?
Share screen.
Counselor Clerk, make sure that I can't interrupt you to share a screen. Let me just, I just, and this is purely for just your, for educational purposes. But I just wanted to give you a better idea because I realize sometimes we talk about things in a vacuum. I just wanted to show you the towns in the state, cities and towns in the state that do operate as districts. So, the color, the yellow or whatever that next color is, darker yellow, are districts. So, these are, these are districts. The green box indicates ones that, you know, could be considered similar to Bridgewater-Rainham. Yeah, Bridgewater-Rainham. So, you know, if I scroll down, you'll get a sense of how many towns in the state are currently districts. And I, you know, I'm not going to recite them all, but I think it's more, more beneficial for the visual just to, you know, maybe put the counselors at ease that there are, there are districts and they function very well. And they, they, as I mentioned, are governed by state law and state regulations. So, I won't.
The first district you had up there, I mean, I, and this, this, I think, would be important as far as outreach goes, is that, I think it was Medway, Foxborough.
Yep.
And then another town, right, in the first one? But anyway, Attleboro, is Attleboro in there? No. Okay. Medway-Hopton-Halls. So, if you click on each one of those town websites, and then you go to Government and hit Veterans Agent, all three of them have the same, same page. So, they're in sync. And that's, that's kind of where I'm going with this.
Yep.
We need to be in sync with what Rainham has for a website. We need to, they need to be in sync with what we have for a website. As a matter of fact, we need a better website for Veteran Services because it really is...
And that's part of Veteran Outreach. I mean, obviously, you know, most people will reach out nowadays via a website and to try to get information. And, and I know we've, we've, we need to improve that kind of outreach.
East Bridgewater has a fantastic website for their Veteran Services, and they're a very small town.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Throw you to Mr. Dutton. Quick question for clarification. In our last conversation, and apologies if you did mention it literally tonight. When they talked about staffing a district, it was typically a full-time employee, a part-time employee, and an admin. Is that correct? Is that like a full-staff version?
So, so the state requires certain staffing levels depending on your combined populations. So, we... So we have, as I mentioned, we had a part-time nineteen-hour week.
Right.
And that for certain reasons. So now we would have full-time, we'd be required to have one full-time agent and one full-time administrative assistant, administrative help.
Okay, so that's the staffing plan. Okay.
That's the staffing plan right now. If there is demand that requires more than that, then we're prepared to, to offset some of that cost as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lindy?
Counsel Robinson asked my question. I'm just wondering if we're starting off with lower expectations. I personally think, we, we said that we weren't really serving people well with the nineteen hours. It seems to me like it shouldn't wait. That we really should have at least a full-time, the administrative assistant and maybe a part-time person to go along with it. So I'd just like that to be considered. And then my other question was, we're going with Rainham. I know we were the school district with them. Was the other, were the other two Bridgwaters even ever considered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep. At, at the time we reached out, they didn't have a particular interest in, in joining us. But I think one of my goals is to make sure that we are providing a service with really good qualified leadership. I think once we do that, we'll convince other neighboring towns that it's a, it's a worthy cause and to jump on board. Now, mind you, when you start adding populations, you're adding staff. So, so yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Yep. Dr. Perry?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Dunn, so what is exactly the process of forming the district? And what type of timeframe are we talking about? Does this happen quickly? Does this take time? Because obviously, I think we're of the essence here of getting someone in place as soon as possible.
Nope. That's a great question. Essentially, the, the state has a template that, that we will use. We have used to do a draft agreement. And we are prepared, the state has also indicated that they're in, obviously, they're promoting this and they want towns to, to combine forces. But they are fully supportive of our efforts. They, they will get that agreement in front of the approving authority at the state level and turn that around very quickly. So hence, we feel comfortable going out, advertising the position. And as I mentioned, we've gotten at least three extremely well-qualified folks.
And just as an extension of that, obviously, we know how the percentages go with the school district. This is a fifty-fifty split as far as cost share on, at least with the two towns at this point in time.
Yep. We're, we have proposed and Rainham's accepted a fifty-fifty split in the cost share.
Thank you.
Counsel Murphy?
Doc's Perry asked one of my questions, but I just have an additional question. Because it's a two-town model and it's you and the Board of Selectmen, if there were a disagreement amongst a staffing issue and you were one way and the selectmen were one another way, how is that resolved currently?
So as my, my understanding in Rainham, they've, although they have to approve the creation of the district, they've given their town administrator the ability to, you know, deal with the, the HR components of, of the hire and then the, the oversight. So there'd be joint oversight. We will take the lead on oversight. You know, we're talking with Rainham about other possibilities as well. But on this one, we'll, we'll take the lead on, on the oversight.
Good. Great. Any additional? Yep. Counsel McKinnon?
So I wasn't here last week, but I was listening and I could have sworn you said they were going to vote on it and it can't Rainham, and it kind of sounds like you just said that again. Why do we not vote on it? Because we're a select board, because we're not a select board and we're a council?
Yep. Chapter forty, section four A. I think that's forty-four A, says that the chief executive officer of a town, city or town, is the one that, that commits to the district. In Rainham, that's their Board of Selectmen. Here, that's.
That's you. Just wondering. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay. Thank you. We can move on to item B, Sewer Project Update.
Uh, let me stop sharing. Four A. Okay, so anybody who's watching at home, it is four A. The sewer project, just as I, I think it's worth a reminder, I don't want to bore the council, but we are about halfway through our sewer renov, phase one of our sewer renovation project. That's all being driven by changes to DEP and EPA discharge permits, permit levels, specifically for nitrogen and phosphorus. Phase one, which we are halfway through now, addresses nitrogen reduction. Phase two will address phosphorus. So everything we're doing down there is pursuant to our discharge permit. We estimated back in seventeen, twenty seventeen, we estimated that phase one and two would be thirty-one million dollars. Phase one alone is now forty-four million. And so phase two, our most recent cost estimates, are almost fifty-seven million, which puts, puts the total price tag almost a hundred million dollars. And that's clearly triple, more than triple our original estimate. So, so what are we doing? Our engineers are going back to DEP and EPA and showing the two agencies our cost estimates and requesting another affordability analysis. So the affordability analysis under their regulations isn't just sort of a, an exercise. We actually go and do a, well, the engineers go in and do a really in-depth deep dive into the capacity of the service area of our ratepayers to absorb the kind of rate increases that would be required to, to pay for that kind of expenditure, that kind of bonding. So, so as a result of that affordability analysis, if, if it looks as if it, it triggers waiting period, then EPA and DEP will allow that. The best-case scenario for us would be if it triggered substantial increases in funding, federal funding for the remaining, remaining part of the sewer project, phase two. So we have not started phase two. We haven't, we are in the very preliminary stages of engineering. But we will not move forward until we know whether the affordability analysis, and it's a no-brainer, quite frankly, the affordability analysis will show that our ratepayers cannot afford to pay. So worst case, it buys us additional, additional years to comply. Nobody's, nobody's contesting the, the need to comply. But worst case would be additional years to comply with the nitro, the phosphorus discharge thresholds. And best case analysis, best case would be if they offered additional federal, straight federal funding. Middle scenario would be low interest, no interest, revolving fund borrowing, and, and then substantial loan forgiveness. So we're playing all those things. But the first step is that affordability analysis. And just so that there's no unfounded expectation, we want to make sure that you know that that will take a period of months to complete. So, so we're looking at, you know, I would, last meeting I said the long-term for us is ten years. Medium term is five years. So we're looking at more medium, medium term resolution to this case.
Thank you. Counsel McKinnon?
What happens if we never start phase two? Would the state come down on us, funding? Because I mean, the prison, they're wastewater, as we know. They're not doing anything about that. The rules for me, but not for thee, kind of. I'm not, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Uh, there's certain, certainly, certainly some of that. The state does have a request in. They've started their engineering process for their plant, the DOC. But the penalty for us not complying essentially are daily fines, very significant daily fines. So.
Right.
So it's like you pay for it one way or the other.
Yeah. It's like if you have a conservation problem, hundred bucks a day or something like that.
For us.
More, a lot more than that.
Thousands of dollars a day.
Yeah, just wondering. Thank you.
I just wanted to confirm, maybe like the upcoming milestones to check back in on it. So, I guess, when is the next action that we take? And maybe what is the next time we hear something? But when are we expecting to hear something back?
So I would like to, given the, the magnitude of the funding involved, I'd like to come back to you on a regular basis, whether it's once a month or once every two months, to come back to give you an update on where we stand. And some of those updates may, there may be nothing, no, nothing to report. You have not voted to fund phase two. So you have not voted a bond authorization or an appropriation for phase two. And we won't, we won't obviously come back to you with a request for funding or with authorization appropriation until we've done everything we can to either drive the total cost down substantially or exhaust all our legal possibilities. But, but I'll keep you abreast of, of our progress in that regard.
Thanks. And then just my last question, as you mentioned earlier, that we might be seeing maybe a softening in building permits and some things like that. So if we see a softening in general in that market, you know, I imagine we're monitoring that too, is, is there a point when we, we switch back to the original? Are we expecting, are we expecting relief through that, the economy versus the exception process?
Probably not. You know, right now, water and sewer projects are well-funded generally throughout the country. And as you know, anytime the federal government puts money, a lot of money into a particular sector, the cost of making those improvements will escalate. And I think that's partly what we've seen here. There's so much demand for, for contractors to do water and sewer projects that we're just seeing a really rapid escalation. Will at ease, you know, with water issues will be coming sort of at the forefront, January of twenty twenty-six. PFAS thresholds will drop. The EPA will finally adopt a nationwide PFAS level of four parts per trillion. We're at twenty parts per trillion now. We have a hit once every year, maybe. Or once every eighteen months. Now, everybody, virtually everybody in the state, after January of twenty-six, will start getting hits. So there'll be a huge, hopefully a huge increase in funding from the federal government. But there'll be a huge increase in the demand for water contractors to do PFAS filtration systems. So it's a, it's sort of a bleak outlook in terms of economic, you know, the sort of the macroeconomics of it. But we're dealing with Bridgewater, the microeconomics of, of Bridgewater, so to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Lindy?
Through you to the town manager. So this kind of makes things kind of bleak for development too. If we're bringing all the new businesses and housing to Bridgewater. So how do we balance those?
That's a great question. So our, there's, you know, certainly we've got discharge limits. Discharge limits are, the gallon discharge is the same thing that we've always had, or well, in the recent past. The nitrogen and phosphorus limits that are within those gallonage have dropped. So they're, they're tightening down the, the nitrogen and the phosphorus that you can discharge into the, into the river. And again, we're not trying to evade complying with discharge limits. We just are asking for assistance or help in getting there, given the rapid cost escalation. But, but sewer capacity is something, as, as you know, Mr. Rulie has talked about. And, and one of the, the reason we know that engineering is starting on the, on the DOC plant is that we've had a discussion with the DOC engineers about diverting some of our flow to, to their plant. And so they want to build that plant to accommodate that kind of, that kind of flow. So that we, they need, they've got our flow figures now. They know what, what we produce. They know what the university produces, what their total percentage, what their total gallon contribution to the plant is. So, so based on those figures, they can go and, and do a proper engineering and in a, in an effort to get their permit to comply.
Thank you. I don't see any additional questions. We'll move on to item C, Well Replacement Project.
So as Counsel remembers, you voted money out of the water retained earnings to fund the replacement of well nine and, and I believe it was five A. That work is progressing. They did have some issue on one of the, two of those finding sufficient yield. And again, what they're doing, just so you can sort of paint a picture in your mind, is they're looking for water very close to where the, the failed well is. So they're looking, you know, whether it's twenty feet, fifty feet close to where the, the existing wells are that they'll be replacing. And they have, I, I know on the one, I think one of the wells are still in that, that phase. Well nine, they got very favorable production rates. So they are filing all the necessary paperwork with DEP and demonstrating that we've got effective control measures to control, you know, what happens, what kind of development happens around the well site. So that's where we are right now. We know that we will have to request restrictive easements on private property. That's the bad news. The good news is that it's all wetland. So there's nothing that could be built there. So we don't, we don't foresee any issue getting those restrictive easements around that well site. And that's kind of where we are now. It's still, still percolating along, no pun intended.
Thank you. Counsel McKinnon?
Is well nine Plymouth Street?
Uh, well nine is.
The one not in Carver's Pond?
There's one at Carver's, one at High Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think the one at High Street, they're having, they're having more, a little more difficulty trying to find the, the more favorable production rate.
Has there been any talks with the state about increasing our water?
Yes. We've had discussions with the state. We're also participating in OCPC's regional water. I guess, I don't know what they call it officially, but there are regional water discussions to talk about what the, you know, the entire region is kind of starved. Maybe not literally starved for water, but starved for permits.
Got an extra million a day.
Yeah. So, so we're engaging in those discussions. We're engaging in more targeted discussions about a water share program with our neighbors. And I think, obviously, two summers ago, when we had the drought, water was front and center issue. It's still front and center issue. Obviously, with all the rain we've gotten, people don't think about it as much, but we know that our capacity needs to expand. Replacing well nine, and I think it's five A, those two wells will give us increased capacity and, or increased production that will meet sort of the short-term needs of, of the town while we look at other water sharing opportunities with other area towns. So.
Thank you. Counsel Chase?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Through you, please, to the town manager. Just, Mr. Dutton, with respect to the recent PFAS notification that the town was required to disclose, can you very generally comment as to the proximity of the new well locations to the wells that would be responsible for that increase in PFAS?
Uh, I, I know that these are away from the two wells that have proven to be a little more challenging for us. But I can't tell you exactly the locations, because I don't know. But I know that they're not part of the wells, not close to the wells that are being.
Concerned since you said they were operating in, you know, very close proximity to the existing wells, but okay.
Yeah, the, the, the two wells that we are replacing are not near the wells that, that are providing, you know, giving us the biggest problem.
Hopeful sign. All right. Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon?
Just got to bring this up too. Have we looked into Vernon Street wells at all?
Oh, yeah. Yep. Vernon Street, we've got application at DEP. And we've got, we, we have to go back and retest some of the wells, not all. I take that back. We have to do some testing. DEP has, has been quite helpful and not required more testing of the two wells that we sunk on Vernon Street. So that's, that's going through an approval process and then, and then we'll do an additional pump test probably within the next month or so on those two.
Is there any substations or anything on Vernon Street in that area? No?
No.
Just over on this side of town?
Yeah. So they, one of the charges for the engineers is to figure out the most cost-effective way. Yeah. So they, uh, one of the charges for the engineers is to, uh, figure out the most cost-effective way for us to treat, uh, treat the Vernon Street water.
Yeah.
You know, whether that's piping it to Carver's Pond, uh, or whether that's building, uh, standalone treatment. I mean, that's all, those are all on the table and they're, they're charges to give us the most, the best recommendation.
Like I've always said, that's a higher elevation part of town too. So that should be good for the water pressure in town. No matter where it goes, if we do another station out there or whatnot, just it'd be good to get those two going for sure.
Yeah. And there's good volume there. Almost half a million gallons a day, I think, according to the last pump test.
Right. Thank you. Right. Thank you. All right. Uh, moving on to item D, uh, C-click fix stats update.
All right.
Not easy to say.
All right. Let me give you just, uh, I will be quite honest. I'm not as, uh, well-versed uh, in C-click fix as I need to be. Um, but let me just give you a little bit of, uh, some of the stats we've gotten. This, we ran this last week. And we had, uh, well, let me start by saying some of the issues that we had with C-click fix, we've repaired, um, and some of them, uh, some of them, uh, we still need to get a little attention. So just very generally, uh, we've got categories under the dropdown menus in C-click fix. Um, we've got, uh, 109, uh, issues related to street or traffic signs. Um, we've, uh, closed out 99 of those. Uh, we've still got more, uh, to close out. So when you see acknowledge, uh, here five, that means that, uh, that, uh, five people, um, were willing to say who they were and we could, uh, identify them and acknowledge the, um, acknowledge the, uh, the request. I can say we've had some
You're probably me.
games. No, you have more than five.
That's true. I was like, I.
Column. I will say we've had some, um, of our residents, uh, thinking it's fun to submit, you know, 50 or 60 complaints a day. Uh, so I think we've tried to segregate those out from these figures. Shockingly, only 22 complaints, uh, of potholes, uh, or report. I shouldn't say complaints because really what we're trying to do is get, uh, people involved in letting us know when there's an issue, you know, and we, obviously our, our roadway superintendent, Paul DeCosta, keeps very careful eye on, uh, on the roads and, and we try to address, uh, things like potholes as soon as we know they're there, but, but we, we're not always, uh, up on every single, um, pothole that, that, uh, is created over the course of the winter. We have asked people to do their, uh, public record requests through the, uh, C-click fix, and we've gotten nine of those. And so far, three of those have been closed out. Uh, sidewalk issues, um, and you can see, I won't, uh, talk about all of them. Um, but, uh, but you can see, uh, that, that the, obviously the most are on the top. So, um, so there's, there's sort of, uh, just sort of a first pass. Um, once we get, uh, much more adept at, at using the system and once, quite honestly, we get more users onto the system, then we can give you an actual, uh, I can give you a monthly report attached to the town manager's update to just sort of give you a sense of, of, uh, of what our reporting looks like and, and how we're resolving these issues.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Council McKinnon?
Who's in charge of looking over, uh, the, just all this info? You know, when it comes in, who looks at it and says, hey, Paul, someone's complaining about this tree or the water department, et cetera, et cetera.
The beauty is that the system actually generates a notification directly to the department. So, uh, traffic in most of these quite right, right now will go down to, uh, highway department, roadways department. And that'll go right to, uh, to Kim down at, down at roadways. Some things, uh, animal control issues go directly to the animal control officer.
I get what you're saying. I was just seeing if there was someone in this building that looks over it and sends it out, but that's kind of cool that it does it for you.
We will.
Those get read, who knows, but.
So my, my office will, uh, keep track of, of sort of this kind of reporting. And obviously if there's something, you know, something really weird, um, we'll, we're sort of the, Josh is sort of the, that last resort, uh, the other, you know, the other category.
Yep.
Um, and he, once he gets it, he knows where he has to direct it, um, if he can't deal with it. But, but yeah, most, as I say, sewer issues, water issues, those go to the, the sewer, water, water sewer. And, uh, a good chunk of the rest of it goes to DPW.
Yeah. Right. Thank you.
Not all of it, so a good chunk.
Yep.
Maybe just a question about the column. So I am a user of this and, uh, months ago I submitted an issue. There's a bridge that at the end of Vernon that goes into Middleborough, I think. And at some point years ago, a car ran into. So the, the marker that says you're in Bridgewater and you're not has broken and it's in the middle of the bridge. So there's a guardrail there. So I submitted that a while ago. So it's, it's outstanding. Like it's been open for months, let's say. And when I look through here, uh, I don't see anything being overdue. And so I guess I'm, this is, this is definitely helpful just to get a sense of volume. I think in terms of like management response and like accountability, I'm not sure the metrics are accurate here.
No, and I, I would be the first to admit that that is probably true. My guess is that we have not plugged in, um, expectations about, about how long these will take to resolve. Obviously, you know, if you're, if you send us a, an issue that, you know, hey, that bridge on Oak Street needs to be replaced, then you can't have a two-day turnaround. But if you send us a, a report about a broken sign on, on that Vernon Street bridge, um, then, then you should have a response or.
That might be helpful too. I don't know if the tool allows that, but even if we could just set an expectation of thanks. Now this one will take a little bit longer because it's two towns involved or whatever.
So that, and, and, and we did, uh, we have asked IT to dig in a little bit more, uh, into precisely that. We know that the system generates, if you log in and if you give your email address, the system will send you a response. We've received your, your, uh, issue, uh, and we've directed it to the appropriate department. And I think it tells you where, where we've, you know, uh, directed it. So as I, as I said, we, we, we have more work to do, but we're just sort of.
It's interesting. It also notifies me of any new issues near where my issue was. So you get a, you get a pretty good sense of what's happening, but good. Uh, you had asked, you're good?
No. Good. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Uh, thank you for the update on that. Um, that concludes the town manager's report. We'll move on to item, oh, sorry. Council McKinnon?
Two requests. Uh, the, the, what is it? Legion Field there, the field. Right in the front, I forget the name of the field right now, but, uh, it's where the power came down, crushed the fence and that's been sitting there for about three, four weeks. From the big windstorm there, I believe that was. So I kind of want an update on what's going on there. Springtime's coming soon and I imagine that scoreboard doesn't have power. And, uh, that field's probably not safe to use right now with a telephone pole hanging over a fence. And then, um, what was the other thing? Well, uh, it's rather last week or the week before, the historical commission was gonna have a meeting via Zoom for the Perkins, not the Perkins building, uh, Angelo's old building, uh, the factory there.
Yeah.
It was on delaying the demolition. I didn't see it. I, I, it was 10 minutes after it started. So I don't know if it was a quick meeting or if it didn't happen. I just, I'm wondering what's going on there. Cause that, it's gonna be good to see that turn into a two-story self-storage business.
Yeah. I'll, um, I know, I, I know that there was some issue with the technology, I believe, but I'll, I'll find out what the result was.
Asbestos and all that. So I know it's gonna be a pain in, pain to do, but definitely good to see that gone. Especially if we're trying to make along the rail way look a lot better, which is definitely something the town could benefit from. Cause it doesn't look that pretty when you drive through on a train.
No.
So not even my own street that I live on looks that pretty from the train. So.
No, I'll get more details on that.
And then just one question. Have you talked to Paul about the stop signs that I brought up at certain like Spruce and Vernon Street, the flashing stop signs?
Yep. That's on the agenda for the, uh, transportation committee.
All right.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. That's it for me.
Do you want an update on that in the next meeting though? The, the outcome of that or?
Is that gonna be something that would be available in two weeks?
An update will. Yeah.
Yeah. If not.
Actually, it may not be.
I can, I can bring it up next meeting or.
Yeah. They just met recently.
Right. Thank you.
Uh, do we have any other requests for the next town manager update? Okay. Uh, we can move on to item J, discussions. We have no discussions. Committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Uh, I just have one quick one. Um, strategic planning did meet. We're in the process of preparing the town manager's goals. Uh, we have asked, uh, if people have ideas for those that they'd like us to consider to please route those through the town, uh, council clerk. And then we will bring, uh, the compiled version of that back to this group for a discussion. Any other committee?
Yep.
Um, just a, just a quick update. Um, the community and economic development committee has had a couple of meetings um, recently related to the form-based code. However, um, I'd like to actually present those, um, recommendations and, and discussion points in our next meeting, since we have deferred the form-based code discussion.
We'll put it in as a presentation item, uh, for the next meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. Great. Anything else? Okay. Uh, we already took L out of order. So we're moving to item M, old business. We have none. Item N, new business, uh, order O, FY 24 025, acceptance of energy aggregation plan. I would defer to the town manager for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the energy aggregation plan, as you, uh, recall, because the council voted to, uh, begin the energy aggregation process. The plan is a, basically a standard plan. Um, it gets referred to the Department of, um, Public Utilities, uh, as well as, uh, the Department of, uh, Energy and Environmental Affairs. I can't remember what it's called. Um, but that, um, that, uh, once the council approves it, then it can move on to the next step. Uh, Dr. Hunt had mentioned that, that, uh, he's excited to see that go. And I would encourage, uh, the council to, uh, vote it when it comes back after, uh, I don't think you need to. I don't believe you need to refer that. Um, you're certainly welcome to, but.
Try to retain it at council since we've already discussed it. Okay. Maybe just a question for you on this. At the school committee meeting, they mentioned that they are also negotiating rates, um, for electricity. I don't know if there's some way that they can benefit from our aggregation plan, but if there is, maybe just a conversation point with them.
That's certainly worthy of a conversation. Um, we have tried to engage the, uh, the schools, uh, in, in additional conversation about energy. They're not quite, I don't think they're quite where we are. Um, but we'll continue to keep that door open.
Okay. Yeah. Especially if we can use that towards the total tonnage of electricity that we're negotiating. All right. Um, thank you. Uh, any questions for the town manager on that? All right. I would entertain a motion to retain at council, uh, for our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
Uh, actually a question for the town attorney on this one. Um, our next meeting is a week from now. I think some of these have to go two weeks. Is it, is it a one-meeting cycle or is it?
No, you're fine.
Okay.
You're fine. Pushing it forward to the next meeting.
Next. We, uh, our next council meeting, I think, is it next Tuesday? Is it? Oh, it's, ignore that. We're meeting in two weeks. So we're fine.
You're good either way.
Apology. I'm just excited for the next. All right. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to retain at council for our next. We have a motion in a second. All right. Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Uh, next item B, order O, FY 24 026, acceptance of a non-recurring revenue to capital. Is there a quick overview on this one or?
This, uh, yes, this is, uh, money that, that flows from the supplemental state budget and, uh, comes in, we commonly refer to it as prison mitigation. Um, and, uh, we commonly, uh, vote to, uh, allocate that towards our capital, uh, reserves.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance and finance committees.
Still moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Item C, general ordinance D, FY 24 005, amend chapter 74, article two, storage of new or used tires. Have an overview on this one?
Thank you, Mr. President. This one, uh, as I mentioned last week in an update on the tire, uh, pile, um, we, uh, the research we had done, we looked back at the town's, uh, ordinance on tire, used, uh, new and used rubber tire storage. And, uh, we were somewhat surprised to learn that the ordinance allowed, uh, the, uh, storage of used tires. Um, and that seemed, you know, obviously is a problem that we're facing that Counselor George has pointed out. Um, so Counselor McKinnon offered to, uh, sponsor a, uh, revision to the, uh, existing ordinance, which would basically keep in place the, uh, requirements for existing, uh, ti- tire storage, which are pretty stringent. Um, but would prohibit any, uh, new, uh, additional, uh, tire storage, uh, within the town. Um, it also, uh, rewords some of the, um, language on, uh, keeping, uh, weeds and trees and grass, uh, away and simply requires that they be, uh, removed, but does not mandate the use of herbicide. We had a meeting on this today and, and my recommendation, uh, to the health agent was that we'll deal with the, uh, mosquito issue or the, or the, uh, the bug, uh, any bug-infested station issues, uh, through, uh, border health regulations, which, uh, which I think they're prepared to, to take up. So.
Thank you. Um, I would entertain a motion to refer to rules and procedures.
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay. Uh, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Uh, that concludes new business. We're now, uh, moving to item O, citizen comment. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Thank you for sticking with us.
Hi. Janet Hanson Pleasant Street. Um, I just have a concern and I don't know if you can answer, um, when I've noticed that some of the meetings that I go to lately, it seems to be that a lot of them were told that we can't publicly comment on something that's on the agenda. I've never had that happen before. I've gone to the planning board. There was a concom meeting for, uh, recently that we're not allowed, we had public comment, but we couldn't comment on what was on the agenda. But that's the whole point of us being there to comment. And I didn't know if something changed. Um, I've talked to other people who are all kind of puzzled. Over the years, I've never had experienced that. Um, I, you know, if it's, um, I just don't know if that something's changed. Why all of a sudden can't we just talk about something? It happened recently at the concom and it happened at the planning board meeting. Um, we weren't allowed to, um, talk about certain things that were on the agenda, but I thought that was the whole point. So if somebody could look into that, I and many others would appreciate it that because we were totally confused and, and then they say, does anybody want to comment? Well, that's the only reason we're on there is to comment about what's on the agenda. And, um, also, um, I was, I heard about the Vernon Wells. I was told, well, you said that they were closed, um, because of magnesium. Increased magnesium? Yeah. There was an issue with the Vernon Wells way back. So like, why were they closed to begin with? So that may be something to answer. And the other thing is that click fix, how do you find it? I don't know where you go on your website, um, to find it. So if you can post that, um, or let me know at the end of the meeting, um, so I can look at it. I tried to look while I was here and I didn't find it on the, on the website. I don't know what to look for. So that might be part of the problem on some people like myself. And, um, the other, I'm sorry to hear that Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Boer, Mr., um, George are leaving. I'm so sorry. You know, you'll be missed. I wish you'd change your mind, but, um, so, and, uh, and I just feel like that the, I'm just concerned about campus plaza. It sounds like a push to push those businesses out to change it. I don't know what the landlords, but you know, we just have to look at that area, um, you know, and I still think four stories is high enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, maybe if we could put in the, uh, just a quick note for the town manager. Sorry, just maybe if we could put on the, the town manager's update next time, um, maybe working with the town attorney, an update on just commenting, uh, on public comment. Uh, and maybe if we could add just a note about another update on the Vernon Street wells specifically. Uh, and then an update on how people can access C-click fix. That would be great. Thanks.
I can do that. I should have said, um, I should have said it's referred to on our website as report it, that the. The, the program that runs, the program, the software that runs it is C Click Fix, but on the website, it's simply an exclamation point in a circle says report it, so. That would have helped.
Sounds like a branding issue. I know, that's just.
That's right.
Seems like something that's fixable, Adam. Alright, thank you. Um, that concludes, uh, citizen comments. Item P, council comments. Uh, we'll start with councillor Chase.
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, I'd just like to express my thanks to all the citizens who came forward this evening. Uh, and prior to our meeting, those citizens who have reached out to us by email or telephone to, um, uh, discuss their concerns, particularly with respect to, uh, our downtown revitalization and, um, um, uh, form code adoption. I think that, um, we've had some productive discussion, uh, this evening, and, uh, certainly we know that, um, at our next meeting in two weeks, we'll, uh, continue on that, uh, discussion further, and I think that, um, many people in the community do share the interest and excitement that we have witnessed and that we have excel, ourselves experienced, uh, and hope to see this through to fruition, and I think it certainly has already, um, made, uh, great benchmark strides, and, uh, I look forward to seeing it through to completion. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Lindy.
Oh, okay.
I read them in order. Murphy's next.
Um, I appreciate also the folks that came forward. It was nice to have the school committee, the finance committee and everybody here too, so we're all on the same page on the, on the budget. Um, I am happy to hear about what's going on with the Veterans District. I am a little apprehensive too, however, I've heard from some of the veterans that actually want a Veterans District. Okay, I just want to make sure we have enough staffing to support the increased needs after all the wonderful outreach that we're gonna do. And, um, uh, just an update, I happen to be at Boundless Bean and the new cafe that we all granted the license to, Aguave, I believe, is open. It's the first week. It's been there a couple of days. Um, you know, I'm, I'm hoping for more than Mexican restaurants, all within a walking distance of each other at some point, but I want to try it. And, uh, lastly, um, I am glad we postponed slightly the Form-Based Code and everything. I am glad to hear resident concerns, because that's what I've heard about height. Um, I think six stories is a bit much, and maybe there's a compromise between four and six down the road, and we could talk about that some more. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Murphy?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councillor McKinnon?
Just want to echo Mark's comments on thanking everyone that came by, and I'd also echo his comments on maybe possibly doing a compromise when it comes to the height. I could see us going to five stories, and that could be a good thing for the town still and developers, but, uh, besides that, I want to send my condolences to a fam- the families out in East Bridgewater who just lost their house on Route 18 over the weekend. I drove by, the only reason why I'm bringing this up, I drove by, I see it on fire, and then three, four hours later, I go by, it's still burning down, and they have excavators tearing it down while they're trying to put it out, because the, the su- uh, the fire hydrants on the street weren't hooked up like they thought they were, and the ones on 18 ran dry. So that was an issue, and when we had the fire on 18, that was an issue for us. We didn't go dry, but we lost pressure a lot, so that's kind of why I stress all the water issues, more than just the fact that our infrastructure is choked out, but. And then I just want to give a shout out to the businesses who in town that have been getting, uh, enterprise articles and all the other internet attention they've been getting. Uh, Sweet Needs on Hale Street has been in the enterprise about three times. If you get the donuts fresh, they melt in your mouth. They're really good. You go there, the cookies at night, they also melt while you eat them. Uh, Jay's Flying Pizza was on a platform that has millions of viewers for, uh, their bar pie, and I recommend if you haven't tried Jay's Flying Pizza to get over there, because it's more than just bar pie. Steve's a really good guy, the dude. Think of Barstool Sports, Dave Portnoy's the runner. During COVID, he ran, he raised 91 million for small businesses. Jay's Flying Pizza donated $900 to that. That just shows what kind of businesses we have in town. You know, you, you don't need to like Barstool or that guy, but you gotta like Steve for the stuff he did. And then, uh, this is a Ray and Ham business, but a Bridgewater, Ray and Ham student, Augie's Food Truck, right next to Muckey's, also got, uh, an enterprise article, and if you like chicken Mozambique tacos or any chopped cheese, anything along those lines, the stuff I shouldn't eat, I advise you definitely try it out next time you drive down 44. But besides that, that's it for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, councillor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a couple of things. One, thank you very much, Mrs. Hanson. Uh, hopefully the majority of people that know that I'm leaving feel the way you do. A few won't, but that's okay. Uh, I'm also very excited to see that there are three candidates for town council. I believe one is, uh, brought, turned their papers in. Hopefully the other two will as well, so we have a full slate of candidates, new blood, um, which is always exciting to see. And to kind of echo on, uh, councillor McKinnon's comments, just in general, it is very nice to start seeing media sh- uh, highlighting Bridgewater businesses versus just sitting and waiting for the things that aren't going well, uh, to drive their, their clicks. So, uh, hopefully that will, that trend will keep on going. And we got a lot of work to do in Bridgewater, but we also have a lot of opportunity, and I think, uh, all the work that we put into it is going to pay, uh, dividends down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Uh, again, thanking, uh, the BR School Committee and, uh, Finance Committee for coming and meeting with us tonight. Uh, good information shared that hopefully will, uh, allow us to continue the budget process for FY25. Um, I want to make, uh, also a comment that, uh, yeah, I want to, uh, welcome Casa Agave. They just opened up. Uh, as mentioned, uh, had a chance to check them on out, and, uh, so far so good, so I wish them the best of luck in, uh, in operating, and hopefully, uh, people get out to see them. Uh, and then finally, I just want to also give a shout out to, uh, members of the Bridgewater Fourth of July Committee. They actually did a little fundraiser for, uh, the Bridgewater Lions and the fact that, uh, we lost a couple of our decorations this past Christmas season, um, including Cindy Lou Who is still missing. Um, but, uh, they raised some money for, uh, replacing her and a few other items, and certainly some upgrades for next year, so. I want to give them a good shout. They raised over, uh, they raised about $900 for us for that, so I thank them very much for that. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Gallagher?
My turn. I got a few things, few things here tonight. Uh, first, on the joint meeting we had tonight, I think we did, um, accomplish a lot tonight. We, we hear this every year, and, and we know the needs of the school district. We know the needs of our community when we see the town manager's budget. Um, but I do think that now we're in a, in an op- in a time where things are gonna get much, much tighter, as I think the town manager will agree. We've had some decent revenue years for the past several years, but I think the indication from the state is state revenues are tightening up. Some of our own local receipts are tightening up. So I think the fact of the matter is, is we, we have made some very prudent decisions as a council over the last several years to put away some, you know, reserve funds to help us, hopefully not catastrophically, but to kind of guide us through any, any tough budget cycles that hopefully preserves every job, and we don't have to see any, any major cuts. So, and I know the school committee's got their work cut out for them to get their budget into a more reasonable ask, uh, for the communities, and we'll see where that goes down the road. As far as the Form-Based Code goes, I'm, I'm excited that we're moving forward with that, and I know there are a lot of concerns that were addressed tonight, and I do think that we'll come, those will come to, um, compromise, and we'll see what's put before us in a couple of weeks. But I am also excited, as we've talked about new businesses that are, have opened up in, in Bridgewater, and those that have been recognized. I do think that we have, are seeing, uh, the, uh, Perkins Foundry property finally coming to approval, and that could be certainly a big catalyst for development in our downtown area. In addition, um, it was, it's encouraging to hear from our Community Economic Development Director that there are some s- serious developers looking at the Broad Street property. So those two things, I think, will be a tremendous, a boost to our town, as we talked about downtown revitalization. As far as Campus Plaza goes, I, I, I don't know where that's gonna go down the road, like, that, that might be one of those 50-year things. Um, but I do think that, um, some sort of redesign of that campus plaza with more businesses would be helpful, but I do think Perkins Foundry and Broad Street is, those things look real, and I'm excited to hear that those opportunities are, are happening. When I, when I came into the town hall, uh, the, the academy building tonight, uh, I did notice, I hope all of you noticed, the signs that are up in the, in, in the building now. Um, and as I, and the first one I saw was this big gold thing that said Town Manager's Office. I'm like, wow, that's pretty big. I don't know who's got the responsibility to shine that brass, but it looks pretty good. No, it's, it, it does look nice. It's a nice addition to the, not just to that office, but other offices and directions around the building. It really loo- it really does look, look nice. Um, and as councillor George said, I'm excited that at least three people have stepped up to the plate to run for, for council to replace us. And, uh, no competition yet, but at least, um, their three seats have been filled. Um, a town clerk has a, a competition. We still have a couple of openings. I think one on the school committee and one or two, one, one library trustee, I think, is still available. So there's still room for more people to pull, um, either to challenge somebody or to run some of those open seats, but at least it seems that some, some good people are stepping forward to, to run for office. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Robinson?
Um, I was, I wasn't gonna say anything, but now I have a couple of things. Uh, school committee, um, and budget. Um, I would really like to encourage us to continue to ask questions. Um, I'd love to have a second conversation with, well, I know we will have a second conversation, but one of the things that has been a persistent theme is, um, the lack of data um, used to inform decisions, used to report back around outcomes, and actually there's data lacking even from the student success plan. Um, I, I don't know if any of y'all felt the same, but I'm very, very nervous to hear we continue to compound more expense and increase costs and, you know, is there a reserve? What is the strategic plan to, to figure this out? We're, we're absolutely in, going to be facing less money. Absolutely. It's affecting K through 12. It's affecting higher ed. It's affecting public and privates. It's affecting all education. Um, and so I really, really want to continue to encourage us to ask for, demand that the data is being utilized, being analyzed, and, and, you know, I know we can't squeeze blood from a stone, but, um, we really, really need to get more clarity. We get a lot of, here's how much the costs are, but we're not get, getting a good view of, well, what are we getting for that, or what aren't we getting for that, right? And it's just, just talking to it. I'm like, I would rather see a 15-page spreadsheet and spend hours on that than just we're, you know, we just need money. $15 million is huge, and it doesn't sound like that that's going to help us leapfrog. It's gonna just kind of keep our head above the water. So anyway, please continue to press for, for data and information. Um, definitely looking forward to the Form-Based Code. Um, I am a public servant, and I would be remiss for not doing my promise to a resident, um, because I would not agree to sit on the train platform, but I am going to express the view that, uh, we have a town resident who would like us to make sure that we think about, maybe we should just get rid of the train station entirely. Speaking on behalf of the president, so I just wanted to share that, and then, um, I, oh shoot, there's one minor last thing, sorry. Um, and thank you again, Ms. Hanson, for, for sticking it out. So, thank you and good night.
Mr. President, can I just add one comment?
Sure, please.
Yesterday, I got off the phone with Walter Timofley, and we're scheduling a meeting very soon, so if any of you guys have anything you want brought to his attention, it would be good to know within the next week.
Great.
Sorry, with who?
Walter Timofley, our senator.
Okay, sorry. Thanks.
Timofley, yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Alright, I will, um, I will bring us home. Um, so I also, uh, wanted to thank, uh, everyone who participated in the first meeting today, the joint meeting. Uh, appreciate the full school committee being here, finance committee, uh, and the superintendent as well, and thank you to our town manager for preparing his portion as, uh, as well. I think as others have said, um, it is very hard for us to make decisions right now. The amount of money we have is finite, the amount of needs we have is not. Um, and somehow we have to figure out, uh, just pick a few winners out of that that are gonna pull us to the next stage, and then from there, we go to the next stage. So when we talk about the sort of the strategy of downtown and some of these other things, um, like, these are critical decisions for the town that 20 years from now will determine sort of what type of town we are. Um, and so it's important that we make good decisions, have good conversations, work collaboratively, but it's also important that we pick two or three things to do really well. Um, and that means that there will be 100 things that we just can't prioritize right now, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate what the three things should be and really put all of our emphasis behind uh, those critical things that, uh, deserve the funding right now. Um, but thank you again to everyone who participated in that. Uh, quick note on the train platform. I take the train, so I would also say, please don't remove it, or else I have to walk to work. No, I, I appreciate the fact that people are coming up with interesting ideas right now. That's what it's about. Um, I appreciated the public comments today. Uh, I am also in favor of something le- less than six. Um, but something like five seems reasonable down there. Uh, I think we got a, a few asks from David Moore, and I will follow up directly on those. Uh, and, uh, I appreciated Bill Smith, uh, showing up to talk about the historic district, uh, commission, and, um, I think that's a really good example of the Form-Based Code is something that we as a community should all feel that our, like, thumbprint is on, uh, because it's gonna drive sort of what we become. Um, so it was great to, to have people show up and, and put their thumbprint on it. So I thought that was really good. I would also like to echo, I think the building looks great. Um, it is a source of pride for us. Uh, this is sort of the heart of downtown and the government, so I also appreciated uh, seeing all that, and that whoever was involved with picking that and organizing that, uh, did a great job. I think that is it. I will see everybody in two weeks, not one. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor say aye, aye. All those opposed say nay. We are adjourned.